All right, we'll call this meeting to order. First item on agenda is the twenty-five, twenty-six strategic work. Dr. Luna Vetter?
Board members in your packet is a detailed strategic work for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We wanted to make sure that everyone had that publicly as we look at what the focus areas will be next year.
Okay. No comments, okay. Item two, fiscal year twenty-six consolidated entitlement grant application. First read. Lori Russell.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Luna Vetter. I'm Lori Russell, the Director of Federal Programs. Tonight, I'm sharing a brief overview of federal funds that support our schools through the Consolidated Funding Entitlement Grant. These funds are aligned with specific program purposes, but collectively, they allow us to strengthen instruction, improve equity, and meet the needs of diverse student groups. This grant includes seven funding sources, all of which are shown on the slide and included in your packet. The table provides a brief description of each funding source, the number of participating schools, and the initial allocations for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Are there any questions?
All right, Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you. I, uh, so Oak Plains Academy in Ashland City here. I'm just kind of curious about that. I know about Oak Plains Academy, but can you explain a little bit about what that grant there is for?
Yes, Oak Plains Academy, it is, their address is Ashland City, but it's right inside the border of Montgomery County, so it is part of Montgomery County. They are a residential treatment facility serving students with emotional and behavioral needs.
Is that, what's our involvement with them?
Our involvement is managing the money. So their allocation that you see, they are, they have those funds to spend, but they don't get them. They remain here with the school system, and we facilitate the purchases and use of the money.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item three, twenty-five, twenty-six, Student Code of Conduct Updates. First read, Matt Slight.
Like that, that brief, but I am happy to share with you tonight that in this being my fourth year to share information on Student Code of Conduct, this is probably one of our shortest presentations. So I'd like to start tonight just as a reminder that this is access, this first slide shows access to the Student Code of Conduct for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is an annual event. Each year, we review the Student Code of Conduct. That, that review is conducted by all major department chairs, our legal counsel, school administrators, and surveys are sent out across our district for all stakeholders, teachers, students, parents. Any stakeholder within CMCSS has the opportunity to contribute to the Student Code of Conduct and make recommendations and references and express either support or concerns for our Student Code of Conduct. This year, this slide reflects the process in which we go through every year, the timeline for the Student Code of Conduct. Would bring to your attention that as early as October of twenty-twenty-four, we're already talking with students about the Code of Conduct and getting feedback about things that they like or don't like, or possible things that they've changed. So Mr. Feldman, especially at the high school level, gets an earful probably every meeting that he attends in reference to the Code of Conduct. But in December of twenty-twenty-four, district-wide surveys deployed, it was deployed twice this year. Again, in January of twenty, January twenty-four of twenty-twenty-five, it was deployed the second time to district-wide stakeholders. In Jan- January first, review and revision of the survey was deployed again. January thirty-first, review and revision survey was closed at that time, so we could collect the data from those surveys. In February, on February sixth, twenty-twenty-five, survey responses were shared with the Level Directors. February twenty-fifth, middle school and high school teacher communication groups were presented with the opportunity to share other things that may not have been, for those who did not respond to the survey, they could contribute information at that time. And you can see through the rest of that list, classified representatives in March, Level Directors reviewed recommendations with Principals and Assistant Principals. March nineteenth to twenty-five, on March twentieth, we had the Elementary Teacher Communication Group, and the information was shared. Questions and answers were given during that time. In terms of the Code of Conduct, Senior Leadership reviewed on April twenty-eighth, and that brings us to tonight, where we are sharing those recommendations with you, the Board. This year of the data, the data was mostly consistent with the last two years, which we believe indicates changes made in the last few years, continues to be received well by our stakeholders. This is particularly true in the area of setting clear expectations and students' understanding of the Code of Conduct. We continue to receive feedback that consequences in the Code of Conduct don't always deter behavior. But as we shared in the February Board Meeting with the District, is making significant investments in behavior management. With the supports being implemented by the Behavior Team, we're beginning to see positive early outcomes, including encouraging trends in upbeat teacher data. While progress will take time, these efforts are aimed at addressing the root cause of student behavior and improving outcomes over time. Mr. Garland, did you have questions, sir?
All right, Mr. Garland?
I have a question for either you or Dr. Luna. Is that any reason why Board members are not mentioned as far as when you sent out the survey concerning student misconduct?
No, sir.
Board, Board members do have access to that as well. So, yes, all, the whole community has access to it, yes.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
This slide here is an example of the refinement of the Code of Conduct that's taken place over the last few years. We've worked diligently to make this document easier for all stakeholders to read and understand. Based upon the feedback that we received this year, we believe that the current format has made it easier for students, parents, teachers, and administrators to follow. As you know, in the twenty-twenty, in twenty-twenty-one school year, CMCSS transitioned from a points-based disciplinary system to a category offense system. This slide highlights a category of offenses. So we have four categories, actually five if you consider the zero tolerance category. Category one offenses are handled by classroom teachers. These are low-level offenses that teachers record and usually are able to handle in the classroom with a prompting of a student or a classroom or seating change, but it's handled at the classroom level. Category two offenses are slightly more serious offenses. The discipline referral is submitted and is addressed by a school administrator or their designate. Category three offenses is a discipline referral is submitted and is addressed by the school administrator or designee. Parent and guardian contact by administrator or designee is required, and this will often, category three offenses will often result in in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension in terms of consequences. Your category four offenses, which are your more severe offenses, is a discipline referral submitted and is addressed by a school administrator or designee. And this is where you'll see the introduction of remandment to alternative school placements for students for consequences for category four offenses. Then we have our zero tolerance offenses. These are offenses required by Tennessee law and CMCSS policy. A student found to be in violation of a zero tolerance offense shall be expelled for a period of not less than one calendar year from the time of the incident. Now, I'd like to share the proposed changes for your consideration in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, excuse me, twenty-twenty-six school year. These proposed changes are based upon stakeholder feedback that has been gathered throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I'd like to start with proposed changes to the cell phone and electronic devices. Before I share proposed changes, I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Lanier for his time and collaboration on this topic. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lanier.
Okay. So, personal communication devices can be a distraction in the learning environment during instructional time. Personal communication devices can be defined as cell phones, headphones, earbuds, gaming systems, smart devices, including watches, tablets, glasses, et cetera, and audio/video recording devices. I requested a view of this policy within our district in the Student Code of Conduct. These devices can be a distraction during the instructional time through numerous avenues, including but not limited to communication with students in other classrooms, cheating, social media, bullying, alerting other students as locker and book pack or backpack searches are carried out, creating a dependency, turn to addiction, not dissimilar from a drug, filming and sharing videos of other students without their consent, arranging of illegal transactions, and another, other vast array of nefarious acts. In May of twenty-twenty-three, CMCSS was the first Tennessee district to file suit against social media companies to include Meta, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat, Google, WhatsApp, YouTube, and the boards of thirty-three school systems in the Tennessee social media litigation voted to join in this lawsuit. In a previous article from Clarkson Now, Superintendent Dr. Luna Vetter was quoted as saying, "Over the years, the school system has observed a rise in mental health issues throughout the district." She cited examples as threats of school violence, cyberbullying, inappropriate conduct, other challenges that are linked to the lack of protections and controls throughout social media platforms. According to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Data, between July twenty-one and twenty-three, over half of our teenagers, twelve to seventeen, reported four or more hours of daily screen time. In one of our own schools, Kenwood High School, Dr. Anderson has implemented a no-cellphone policy. Anthony Johnson, CMCSS's Chief Communication Officer, and I visited with Dr. Anderson about how these changes were affecting Kenwood High School. He shared with us a large change in the instructional learning atmosphere. Staff surveys were carried out through the district, and in spring of twenty-four, seventy-two of Kenwood faculty filled out the survey related to numerous aspects of the educational process. There was an eighteen percent increase in parent-teacher communication, a twenty-eight percent increase in instructional leadership, and a six, a sixteen percent increase in, in school safety and order, a twenty-three percent increase in teacher voice and leadership, and a ten percent, ten percent increase in future commitment. Dr. Anderson shared with us that it's all about the instructional benefits that the students have the ability to concentrate and absorb the knowledge from the educators. We, as the CMCSS School Board, are tasked with the implementation of policies within our district. I've received feedback from teachers, educators, parents, students, and after I explained the benefits, they were really on board. I've also spoken with other districts and students, and they were saying that people actually talk to each other at lunch now. It was freeing, and they actually hang out together. I'm proposing a change to the CMCSS Student Code of Conduct and our, and our policy SAFA-009 that student use of cell phones and other personal electronic devices during the instructional day would be prohibited. Students would be expected to turn their phones off or put them on silent and out of the site during instruction, during the entire instructional day. Students are prohibited from having their phones or personal devices out in the class or in the hallways during passing periods. Electronic devices include the list I said before of all the techno, emerging technologies that can take photographs, record, or play audio or video, input text, upload, download media, connect or receive information from the internet and transmit or receive messages, telephone, telephone calls or images. Examples include, but are not limited to smartphones, watches, glasses, et cetera, headphones, earbuds, gaming systems, audiovisual recording devices, et cetera. In this, we made a note, school administration may search and review electronic devices, including calls, contacts, texts, internet access, et cetera. If there's a reason suspicion that a search would reveal a violation of school rules, students have no expectation of privacy for cellphone use. We would see the interrogations in search section for additional information. Students assume all responsibility for lost or stolen devices. The building principal may approve of the cell phones or personal devices for instructional purposes on a case-by-case basis in the building. The principal may designate a specific time, such as lunch, when students use the phones or specific personal electronic devices. Students may be, may be permitted to use certain devices when there is a documented need for an accommodation, as in medical. You know, some people have a diabetic pump. Accommodations aren't included for all the health reasons. There's an exception for those that are enduring an emergency need. So that way, if anything were to happen, their phones are still there, they can grab them and take them out of the building with them. So while we're taking their phones away, we're just empowering teachers to be able to control their classrooms.
Yes, and protecting instructional time is, is absolutely on, on all of our minds in terms of this particular offense. The recommendation, recommended changes or proposed changes, one would be to move the cellphone electronic device from the current category one to a category two offense. Escalating consequences, repeated category two offenses can become category three offenses, which means there's an option now for out-of-school suspension for students who continually violate that particular offense. Another recommended change is to align with the range of consequences for category two and category three for repeated offenses. Recommended change to update the language to indicate that teachers may confiscate, and not just administrators, so teachers may confiscate the cellphone. And a recommended change to update the language with reference to the new state law, which, Mr. Lanier, we are currently based on what you've read, that would be in alignment with the state law at this point. Our next proposed change actually involves three different categories, but all relatively the same type of offense around language and the use of language for students. Category one obscene or inappropriate language with appear, not derogatory, profane language, category two profane language used remarks to an adult, derogatory, category three vulgar or profane language directed towards an adult or student. We had the recommendation that these three categories are very similar, and as you can see, the offenses have not derogatory, derogatory. That descriptor isn't needed, those, those, that wording stands on its own as far as obscene or inappropriate. So we're just making the recommendation that those terms be removed from those three offenses. The next proposed change is to include unapproved use of artificial intelligence in the existing offense of cheating, plagiarism, and forgery. What we are proposing is that unapproved use of artificial intelligence is added to this category two offense. An explanation which would read includes cheating by using unauthorized help, plagiarism by copying without credit, forgery by falsifying information, and unapproved AI use by using AI without the permission, permission from the teacher. These actions violate academic integrity and have consequences, and those offenses would be addressed through a referral and through consequences. We'd also like to make the recommendation for our advanced placement in dual enrollment classes that the consequences for the offense of plagiarism at that level would be more aligned with the university and college practices. This would include to maintain alignment with college/university standards. A zero, for first offenses, zero will be assigned for the plagiarized assignment, and will be referred to administration, and the incident, incident will be documented. A second offense, a zero will be issued for the assignment, and a second referral to administration will occur. The student may be dismissed from the AP or dual enrollment course and will be ineligible to enroll in any AP or dual enrollment course for the remainder of that academic year. What this gives us the ability to do is those students that are in your AP and dual enrollment classes need to understand that at the college and university level, that those consequences will result in a zero for the assignment and could be put on probation at that college level, or could be removed from a college program. Proposed changes for category four recommendations to specify the number of remandment days and range of consequences to read. Thirty days or ninety days. There was some confusion, and just again, as we continue to refine the Student Code of Conduct, making it more clear for our stakeholders to be able to read, there was a line in there that said up to ninety days. There's only two levels of remandment within CMCSS, and that's for a thirty-day remandment or a ninety-day remandment, so we're just clarifying that as well. And our final, our final proposed change actually comes around clarifying for bus offenses when it comes to fighting on the bus. Last year, we introduced that there should be a building level discipline for fighting like there would be in the building, as well as supporting transportation with removal from the bus. So what we're asking under fighting on a school bus is to clarify building level disciplinary consequences and transportation consequences. The proposed change would read a bus suspension of five to fifteen days will be issued. An out-of-school suspension will also be assigned by the, at the discretion of the principal. And so that student can also be referred to counseling like most of our other offenses as well, if that student needs additional support. Like I said, this is, this is one of our, our shortest proposed changes for the Student Code of Conduct. Any questions? Mr. Mayberry?
Yeah, Mr. Mayberry? Thank you. To the cell phones, I, I just want to applaud, Mr. Lanier, your efforts on this issue. There's a book called Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt, and it's an incredible book and incredible insight to how the author argues the brain is being rewired in regards to these devices and how they are literally anxious just having them on them. And it's a huge distraction within the classrooms, so I applaud your efforts on this. I do have two thoughts, two questions. One, I'm curious why we're leaving the option for lunch for them to have their phones. I personally would say that from the start of the bell to the end of the bell, no phones. So I'm kind of curious about the lunch exemption. I don't know who would ask that to.
I don't know. I would almost, I would almost, if you're asking me, I would almost say take it away all day, but you're gonna, I mean, it was, it was more of one of those give-and-take scenarios as we go back and forth between the district. That some, some schools, they take them away all day. Some day, some of them, they have them during their lunch, then kind of get it out of their system, check their phone, you know, text messages, whatever, you know, but then they go back.
I would, I would almost argue that if you give it to them during lunch, it's, you're kind of just stirring it up. And I know that a lot of fights are coordinated through text messages, and a lot, you know, a lot of things happen on those cell phones. And so I would personally like to see a blackout from this moment we start school till the moment school ends. And that's my opinion on the subject, and that is just my opinion. There are seven of us, so I do want to put that out there. I would, I, I love it, but would love to see that one change. Also, I have, talking to teachers, one frustration I've heard is, for instance, there's a teacher that I know that in his classroom, he's very strict on cell phones. And the kids know that you come in, you put your cellphone away, you don't get it out. But he says his frustration is maybe another teacher is the opposite, and they don't care. And they said it's kind of like whiplash within the classroom. So I'm curious what is in place or what is going to be in place to make sure teachers are universally across the entire board of every school going to force us the way we want to.
I think that, I mean, that's, that's an excellent question, and that can be asked of any rule within the Student Code of Conduct. And again, you have those, you know, that building level administrator who needs to be able to pull their teams together and have their, make sure that everybody is on the same page and on board and that, that level of accountability. But that's going to come through at checks and balances each of the, at each of the schools across the district. I know consistency as a former high school principal was, was hugely important. And we would have those non-negotiables and those ways that we do it, and we'd follow up as administration to make sure that we were being consistent with the enforcement of those policies. Again, it's just like anything else, the student takes the hat off when I point to the hat and turns the corner and immediately puts the hat on and may walk by the, the next teacher and not get caught, right? So I think we continue to do that, but I think we also continue to look at that, the process of change as we do this, that while cell phones do interrupt instructional time, sometimes the enforcement of the rules can also become that major disruption to the instructional time. So as we find that balance and continue to refine our Student Code of Conduct, not just cell phones, but every one of these, we continue to work towards guarding our instructional time as much as possible.
Got you. I, I appreciate that. I would, I would definitely just encourage this as we're going forward. If we're going to summer teacher trainings and all that, to, to express the, well, I believe is going to be the majority of the boards heart to that we want to get this under wraps. You know, we want to be able to see our kids perform better in schools, on, on the school, in their grades. We want to see their behavior get better. And we believe a lot of this is tied to this one issue, and so just love to see that expressed throughout, out the, out the summer. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bryant?
I also want to give Chris props for working on this. I know this is one of the things that you ran on. We went to a TSBA conference, and there was a school there that implemented this way before it even became a law. And they said that the progress that they saw within their school was, was amazing. So I think this is going to be a good step forward. My question, I have a couple of questions. The first one regarding this is, do we have any progress tracking that we're going to try to do on this as far as, say, a year goes by, we implement this cellphone policy? Are we going to keep stats on, on the progress that we're seeing?
I will just say in this district, we keep data on everything. So the teachers are laughing. Truly, so any discipline, it is all tracked through Power School, so we will have data, yes.
Okay, awesome. And then the other question I have is about the points-based system. I know we, this kind of came up a while ago, and I'm still trying to wrap my brain around it, but what year did you say that we went from points-based to the category?
Twenty, I believe it was twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so it was around COVID that that happened. Was there feedback in that when you guys got your results, and you might not know this, but if you could get back to me, that would be amazing, that from any of the teachers or parents regarding that change specifically?
I can go back and look and see if there's data from prior surveys that may have indicate that, and if we can, if we can find that, I'd be happy to provide that information to you.
I'm just, thank you. I'm just really curious as, because I know there was a lot happening at that time. And I know that I've spoken with several teachers when that came into place, and they're just, I'm wondering if we can compare the quality of the results that we're getting from behavioral issues prior to that with the points-based system versus the category offenses?
Yes, I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Garland?
I have a couple of questions I want to ask, and the first one to the attorney. Do you see anything in the legal ramification of any of the stuff that we are recommending as of right now?
I mean, do I have any concerns about any of the proposed changes?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I've been called worse. No, in fact, like even referencing the cellphone, the legislature just passed a law that every district is going to have to adopt a cellphone policy. We, we already had one, we're going to modify it, but the legislature itself said you're going to have one. So that's a large part of what this is based on. Even if we didn't want to do it, the legislature said you're going to.
Okay, I really don't care about that. But what, what, one of my concerns is that what are the reason why parents give kids phones to bring to school is because right now we have legislators at the state and the federal level that won't address weapons, guns, so that they can actually alert. You know, and I, I don't know whether I'm for it or against it. I might be for it if it was if it made sense. I don't see where it makes sense. And the last thing is, Dr. Luna, can we get this information by demographics? When they start taking kids' phones, can we get that information by demographics? I would like to know who is being penalized for having phones in school?
Yes, we, we can break down any incidents in behavior by demographics, and we can categorize by the type of offense.
Yeah, I think Chris will actually get, getting involved in, in, in working, working through this. But I really do believe that somebody somewhere is going to probably bring this up probably from that, from right where you're standing. It's going to chastise the board for them giving their child a tool to protect them. board for them giving that child a tool to protect them, and we are, as a board, is going to take that tool away from them by saying that you can't have it at all during the day, no way, no form. I think that that will turn out to turn to be a problem somewhere down the road.
Anthony Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Garland, and I, and I just want to clarify a couple of things, specific to your point. There is actually a provision in the state law that requires us to have language in our policy that states that students could have access to their phones in an emergency situation. And to clarify, I don't know if you mentioned that, Mr. Lanier, but that is in this policy as well. So when you read the full verbiage of the drafted policy, it states that students would have access to their phones in an emergency situation. That was actually in the law, so that is there. I also just want to revisit something really quickly. So when Mr. Lanier had reached out and I was assisting with researching, the reason why we went to Kenwood High School is because at the beginning of this year, I started getting media inquiries about Kenwood High School's new cellphone policy. And to be quite honest with everyone, I don't always pay attention to exactly what every school's doing. And so after digging into it, I was very interested. And if you've been out to Kenwood High School for a visit, you will see signs on the front door that say no cell phones, this is no cellphone area. And in talking with Dr. Anderson, there's a reality. Like you say, there's, there's hundreds, thousands of students at a school. It can be challenging, and he has said it's challenging for every day, every minute to try to, to police that, if you will. But at the end of the day, it has, it has put on notice for families and for students at schools about instruction, and you should have your phones turned off and put away. So I should also revisit that our very first, and Dr. Kozie can mention, our very first parent advisory meeting that we had this year, which I believe was in September, it's always opened up for just general feedback from everybody. The first piece of feedback we got was from a parent at Kenwood High School who raved about the new policy, the positive feedback that she was hearing from other parents in, in the school environment. And that kind of also, you know, opened our ears to, to what was going on. And the specific provision about lunch was, and again, the word, the verbiage is, the administrator may make that accommodation. They don't have to, they're not required to. But actually, it was, it was Dr. Anderson saying that it was helpful as actually being a tool in the cafeteria for students to, because they didn't get to use their phone all day, now they're kind of checking, catching up, it was quieter. That parent actually commented the exact same thing when she was there to volunteer and visit. She was like, oh my goodness, the cafeteria is actually at a audible level where I can hear what's, with my thoughts in my head. So all that to say, that's kind of where that came from. Understand completely if that's something the board didn't want to move, but it was modeled a little bit after Kenwood. The other piece of data that we saw is that overall, and I'm going to forget these exact numbers, overall, there was a decrease in behavior challenges at Kenwood High School. After implementation, we looked at a six-month period. There was an increase in cellphone, but there wasn't necessarily a drastic increase in repeated cellphone offenses. So it was kind of that first time warning, second time, there might have been some sort of discipline. But other offenses, especially the, the ones around fighting, encouraging, furthering, promoting, fighting, cell phones, that sort of thing, we did see a pretty significant decrease there within the first six months. So just wanted to add that context and more kudos to Dr. Anderson and the Kenwood team for, for really coming out and implementing this before we even knew that we would have a law on it.
Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you. I actually want to go back to Casey's comment there about points versus levels. I actually had it written down at the top, and I missed it, so I'm glad you're able to bring it back up. I would wonder if we could maybe skip the COVID years there, because that's going to be flawed, but maybe three years from the end of the point system to maybe the last three years, do a comparison of behave, of discipline issues, just so we can kind of see a comparison between the two. If you just sent up a report like that, that'd be great.
Yes, we'll absolutely take a look at that.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you. All righty. Item four, resolution of fiscal year twenty-five, June budget amendments, first read. Jeff Taylor?
Good evening, Board. This is just one of our year-end resolutions. We'll have one in June for the federal projects. Starting out, just an overview, revenues, we've got an increase of seven point three million dollars for that. Of course, the largest two are local revenues of almost a million nine hundred fifty thousand, and then just a true up reconciliation for the TISA funding of four million four hundred thirty-five thousand. On the expenditure side, a total amount of two million five hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-two, that was just payroll reconciliation, three hundred twenty-eight with benefits. And then the next biggest one is just operating transfers, where we'd be moving money over to the extended school, summer school, just to make sure we have cat, for cash flow purposes. On the GP fund, you'll see the first group there, local revenues, the local option sales tax, we're increasing that by an additional half a million dollars. Will tax by two hundred thousand, business tax by five hundred seventy-five thousand, and the mixed drink tax of three hundred ten thousand. Under tuition for the St. V peer-to-peer revenue, that's an additional thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then the school-based health program, just higher than anticipated revenues of, in adding sixty thousand dollars there. Under interest earned in lease rentals, that's just an increase based on the current projected revenues for the remainder of the year. The E-rate funding, that one we removed, it's no longer, we're no longer receiving funding for that one. Miscellaneous revenues, other, just a change in our contract for giving us additional revenues. And then five hundred thousand dollars just based on sales of computer laptops in gov deals. Moving on to state revenues, the, once again, the TISA funding increase of four point four million and estimate, excuse me, estimated revenues for the Tennessee paid parental leave of seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And then under federal revenues, under other government citizen groups, an increase of ninety-six thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars for settlement funds. Under non-revenue sources, just insurance payments for vehicles and tornado claims. That gives us an additional available funds of seven point three million, as you see at the bottom of this page. Moving on to the expenditures, under regular instruction, we've got added a twenty thousand dollars that was taken from another function, we'll see that here in a few seconds, for subs needed for teachers related to the lead teacher training, additional twenty thousand. Additional costs and benefits of a hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars, a hundred sixteen, seven fifty was due to medical projected premium increases, and then insurance, life insurance of a thousand five hundred. Under contracted services, just had an increase needed to pay for some of the contracted services that we have for students of twenty thousand dollars. Under special education, this is in regard to the ESY summer learning budget. This will cover the additional cost for teachers, ed assistance, and just increase in the medical projected premiums. Under vocational education, this is just an adjustment to the ISM Innovative School Model Grant, moving funds to match the school's needs. You'll see a decrease in salaries and supplies and materials and in equipment. Moving on to other student support, the, once again, adjustment for payroll and benefit projections under that, for salary and benefits, another amendment, a decrease of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars for the Innovative School Models Grant. As I mentioned earlier, for the twenty thousand dollar increase under instruction, we moved those funds from reg, regular instruction support of fifteen thousand to help cover that need for the substitutes for the lead teacher training. And then a hundred sixteen thousand dollar, a hundred eighteen thousand, excuse me, increase for benefit projections and for air grant stipend. And then lastly, moving funds to pay for the air grant stipend, we moved five thousand seven hundred one dollars out of staff development. Moving on to vocational education support, once again, adjustments to the ISM grant, and we also had an adjustment for payroll projections, mainly for medical insurance. Under technology, we just basically moved these funds around, three hundred twelve thousand four hundred eighty dollars was moved out of contracted services into supplies and materials. That's just to help to pay for data processing supplies for technology purchase, purchases. Under the Board of Education, increase of thirty thousand dollars just for legal costs based on the March invoices that we've received. And then increase of five hundred forty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars for write-off of accounts receivables and just some increases in insurance and liability costs. And then under Director of Schools, an increase just based on projected medical premiums. Under Business Affairs, we mentioned the half a million dollars increase with the laptops for gov deals. It's about a seven and a half percent charge for the sales we have, so we had to increase this line item by forty thousand dollars to cover the cost associated with those sales. Under Human Resources, this is just an estimate, the two hundred thousand dollars at the end of the school year for those that have personal leave, just to ensure in case they want that buyback, we have enough funding to cover that. We increased that by two hundred thousand, and then the employee benefits, we had to increase that by a little bit as well. Under Operation of Plant, just adjustments for salary and benefits for payroll projections, then an increase of thirty-four thousand. This is for an analysis that they just conducted regarding the transportation, the routes and zoning. I think that was done last month or the month before, or getting ready to be done, excuse me. Under Maintenance of Plant, just adjustments to payroll and benefits as well. And then we moved a hundred seventy-five thousand out of contracted services, that's to cover the increased cost of parts and materials. And we moved that over to supplies and materials, added additional two hundred six thousand. And then under Early Childhood Education, just an adjustment under benefits for employee and payroll and benefits, mainly medical premiums. And then at the bottom of the page, you'll see the interfund transfer, we're removing a million dollars over to the Extended School Fund. So that gives us an increase, total expenditure, in the, in expenditures of two million five hundred sixty-seven thousand. And at the bottom, you'll also see we have an adjustment to the ending fund balance of four million seven hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars. And then, of course, we have some smaller adjustments here as well for moving out of the, assigned for education eser and then assigned for technology. Under Child Nutrition, decrease in adult lunch charges of thirty-three thousand seven sixty-three. A la carte sales, we increased that by sixty-eight thousand six seventy-one. And then my predecessor worked with the insurance, with the trustees office and got some, our, how the interest was calculated from the county side updated, so we were able to update that interest earned budget by six hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars that will be coming in this year, projected. And then an increase under School Food Service for accrual received per the state office, and then sixty-nine thousand five oh six for anticipated reimburse, reimbursements under the Section Four Lunch Funds, as well as the breakfast reimbursements, an increase there of three hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred eight dollars. Moving on to the expenditures, just one increase, eight thousand two hundred, just to cover additional vehicle repair costs for their vehicles within that department. So it's an increase to the ending fund balance of a million ninety-four thousand forty-four dollars. Under Transportation, our property taxes, we're going to, are projected to come in higher, so we're adjusting that by a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Under the expenditures, just adjustments in payroll and benefit projection, for payroll and benefit projections of a thousand dollars, and then for the medical premiums of twenty-five thousand four seventy-five. And then lastly, for, well, not lastly, but if we're extended school, you'll see the million-dollar entry in there from the general fund. And then under expenditures, we're just moving money out of regular instruction and salaries, fifty thousand one thirty-six, and moving that over to contracted services under transportation. And then for Capital Projects, this, of course, is in relation to Freedom Elementary, just appropriating those funds, thirty-nine million five hundred sixty-two thousand twenty-nine dollars from contributions from the county. And then on the expenditures side, just appropriating the same amount of money for Freedom. Do y'all have any questions?
Okay, thank you. All righty. Item five, Student School. Oh, you have a question? Oh, all right. Mr. Nelson?
Just a quick question. On Freedom Elementary, as you're going forward to construction, have you noticed an increase on prices for materials? And do you anticipate having to readjust for that?
No, sir. We've already gotten the bid for that project, so those prices should be locked in.
Okay, thank you.
Item five, Student School, Board Member Presentation, first read. Dr. Charlotte Dowdy?
Good evening, Board. We are very excited about the opportunity to collaborate with each of you on a student non-voting member of the Board. We, as an instructional team, believe that this is a great opportunity for a student in CMCSS, because it fosters in them civic and educational engagement. It provides them valuable insights to the decisions that this board makes, just like the conversations that you were just having in regards to the cellphone and other code of conduct issues. And additionally, it provides leadership skills for kids, which we know we hear a lot today about some of those skills that our kids are lacking, and this is a great way to fill that in. Our recommendation to the Board would be that to be eligible to be the non-voting student member, they would be a current junior or senior in CMCSS. We believe that this should be selected from among a CMCSS high school student advisory committee member, and obviously that the student should have a good discipline record with no significant discipline issues. The selection process, every high school nominates four students to serve on the CMCSS High School Student Advisory Committee, and they're typically appointed in August by the high school. So we would like for those students from each of the high schools, the four students from each four high schools, so eight times four is thirty-two, if my math is good, to select somebody from among their peers to be a member of the, the non-voting student member of the Board. We think that those students should have the opportunity to vote for that selection, and we believe that the selected student and an alternate would be presented to this Board for final selection to be that non-voting student member. The student would serve one year. We have, starting in October, because we know they're not selected till August, that way we could lead the students through some activities in August and September before they, we came to you with the recommendation, where they would start in October, and that a student would only be allowed to serve one term, so that we could rotate a variety of students through this opportunity. The roles and responsibilities that we would like to recommend are that this non-voting student member would attend all formal public meetings of the school board, that they would meet with the director of high schools or the designee prior to each meeting to review the agenda and discuss relevant topics to make sure they have an understanding of what's happening before they come into the meeting, and that, that they would be able to communicate student concerns and perspectives to the school board during the comments section of the agenda. Also, those, that student or students would go back to the high school advisory committee and provide updates from the Board, so that there's that constant two-way communication opportunity. We believe that the student should be in a non-voting capacity, and that they must adhere to the policies regarding confidentiality and conduct during all board meetings. The director of high schools and myself will serve as the liaison between the student representative and the school board. The liaison will provide guidance, support, and oversight to ensure that the students are, can effectively participate and have a clear understanding of what's happening in the board meetings. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, if you'll oblige me, we have a video, the student advisory members have the opportunity to go back to their home high schools and select a teacher for a ceremony that we call the High School Teacher of Honor. This ceremony is unique compared to other ceremonies in CMCSS, because students select the teacher that gets to participate. Our Communications Department every year does a really great job of putting together a video of the student advisory members, along with their teacher of honor. Sometimes the kids are talking about teachers that are not their teacher, and you'll see that in the video. So I will take questions at the end, but in honor of the work of all of our teachers, and so you can get a snippet of how amazingly talented these students are, I'd like to play that video for you guys now, if that's okay.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Do my clothes look weird?
They're beautiful.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks.
This is Ms. Burleson. She teaches pre-calc, stats, ACT prep, and algebra two.
This is Ms. Foley. She teaches AP Lang. She also teaches English too, and honors English, and I'm pretty sure she teaches the academy, the kind of academy, English as well.
This is Dr. Pontius. She teaches DE pre-calc, statistics, geometry, and credit recovery, Northwest High School. Northwest High School.
This is Master Sergeant Clarence Johnson, he teaches DRC at Kirkwood High School.
This is Mr. Austin, he teaches English four at West Creek High School.
English four?
English four.
Okay. Um, this is Ms. Nowway at Early Technical College, and she teaches English Lit.
This is Ms. Taylor, she teaches computer science at Kenwood High School.
She's my mother.
This is Ms. B, she teaches biology at Rossby High School.
This is Mr. Wyatt, he teaches world history at CMCSS K through twelve virtual school.
Ms. Hazen teaches at Montgomery Central as our AP literature teacher.
The best part about having a teacher like Ms. B is that she is going to tell you how it is, she has that wit and that sharpness about her that is truly invaluable at times, sometimes you need to hear it even if you don't want to hear it, um, and she will definitely hold you accountable in your personal life and your academic life.
My favorite part about being in Ms. Foley's class is like, sometimes I get a lot of like really self-conscious when it comes to like grades or assignments, so I reached out to Ms. Foley and I emailed her, and she sent me like a really good, long, encouraging email about how I was good enough and I should stand in the honors of AP courses.
Um, I had her class freshman year, and easily my most favorite thing was when we got to make kites as part of our curriculum, like, you can't get that anywhere else.
What I love most about being in his class is how comfortable he makes everybody feel and how many jokes he makes in his class, like, he'll be talking to you, and he'll sneak in a little joke there, but everybody knows it's there, and it's great.
I've heard a lot about Mr. Austin in the classroom setting, a lot of students say that he creates a welcoming space and environment for them, you know, to want to learn and be a part um of the school system and their education process, he makes it very easy.
What I like being about, what I like about her class is that um she tries to do more hands-on like activities, because we do a lot of our lessons on PLP, um, so she tries to get all of us to like engage, instead of just sitting there like looking at a screen all day, she tries to get us to like actually engage with her and then comprehend what we're learning.
A lot of her students have said uh that she's really reliable, giving them advice on not just her class, but other classes and like their life.
You see nature, that is her class right there, she takes elements of the nature, like, say a wasp nest, there's an wasp, an old wasp nest in her classroom, and, let's see, some foliage and around the classroom and whatnot, and all the, oh, fishes, she has fishes, she has a couple fishes in there.
They like Mr. White's class because of his unique teaching style, he makes his classes fun by including little activities in his slideshows, or he might have a game at the end, which makes it really fun.
My favorite thing about being in Ms. Hazen's class is how fun she makes reading and literature, a lot of people, especially teens, think that reading is very boring, but she makes it a very fun experience, and we're really able to engage with what we're doing.
My favorite thing about being a teacher is uh it is a period of constant learning, it's never acceptable to be stale or uh passive, uh, the students inspire me to learn more about the world, about being a human, about kindness, and ultimately, it makes me a better person.
Honestly, it has to be the kids, we have such a special group at Middle College, they're driven at sixteen years old to start getting college credits, um, even if their math skills are not on point, they have this desire already at such a young age to better themselves, and it's awesome to foster that, to be a mentor to that, and to just give them that push.
What I love most about teaching is helping students make connections and get things when they're struggling, a lot of students don't come in loving math, so it's a little bit of work to get them to at least not dislike math by the end of the year, but I think when you see that light bulb and they, they get it and they start to build some self-confidence, it's a great thing.
My favorite thing about teaching is helping students to prep for the future, uh, I've been, I thank Almighty God for this opportunity to be here and to be that servant leader to show them uh what opportunities look like, I like to teach from my failures, uh, so that way they can see I'm actually human, uh, and to say that despite the obstacles or the shortcomings or the failures, uh, or the non-successes, there's still opportunities there to still be successful, I try to tell them, we would never be perfect, but we can still operate at excellence.
My favorite thing about teaching is being able to leave an impact on students, I told myself, um, right before I started teaching, that even if I didn't influence a hundred and fifty kids, as long as it was one in each classroom that I left an impact on, that I would feel like I was successful.
Honestly, the students like their growth, they're fun, um, I started with elementary and I've moved up, like, I've started elementary, went to middle school, then to high school, so every time I progress up like in grades, I'm like, oh, you're more fun than the other grad, so I definitely like high school the most, but the students are a lot of fun.
I love the relationships and getting to see the maturity in our students and getting to see that personal growth, I am um dedicated to try to get them to make their beds up, it's probably the hardest part about my job, but I think that it's going to be the most successful part, and they're like, you're on that again, yes, I am, because it just shows that you put yourself first, when you take care of your needs, you know, something as simple as making your bed.
Getting to teach kids to be curious, that's literally why I tell them, like, we want life skills, but ultimately, I want them to look at something and to think about it, and typically, that happens, I have kids who see uh lichen on a tree, and then they're like, Ms. B, I saw this, and it's very exciting them to think about what they're doing um in life, and it's not just warming a chair, that they have a purpose, it's the big picture, I guess.
The thing I enjoy the most about being a teacher is the relationships you're able to form with the students and their families, it's an opportunity for them to bless you and for you to bless them.
I love being able to show my young people um the broader world and how to um grow their empathy and their understanding of people and places uh that they may never see and that are very different from them, um, through stories and storytelling, and seeing them really care about what this fictional character is going through, because they know that that fictional character is probably living someone's life, and so I feel like literature does that in a way that maybe other subjects, you know, just don't or do differently. Is that okay?
That was it?
Beautiful.
That was easy, see?
It was easy.
Easy, easy. All right, y'all look over this way.
That was it?
That was it.
Oh, okay.
How easy that was, now you get to go get your picture taken.
Good to go?
Yeah, that was it, y'all were pros, that was wonderful, that was easy, right?
Yeah.
Easy peasy, now we'll just ask you-
High five, brother, we did it.
Get your picture.
Thank you for allowing me to play that in its entirety, especially this week, uh, Teacher Appreciation Week, because we have some amazing educators in CMCSS, so, any questions for me about the proposal for collaboration?
Uh, Mr. Griffey?
Oh.
The one section where you were talking about the comments, if I remember correctly, the comments were to come out during board member comments from the student board members, and they would have that, I see it as them having that opportunity, but also see them, would like to see them be able to engage in discussion we're having on issues, because if they are held silent until board comments, they may not be able to pass their message on, on discussion that we're having about a subject that particular night, so I, I would like to see that added, so they also can involve themselves in our discussion as we're talking about a topic.
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to go back and reword that.
Ms. Bryant?
The, uh, just a couple questions, I saw on there that it was just formal meetings, so is there a reason that we're doing just the formal meetings and not the other ones?
What you'll find is a lot of these students are engaged in multiple things, additionally, a lot of them rely on parents to provide their transportation to get them here, and we didn't want requiring them to attend two meetings to be a hindrance to the students, um, and who they were able to nominate and select from among their peers, we felt like one meeting was realistic for families and for these students. Okay. I mean, that opportunity can definitely be there for them, but we didn't want it to be a limiting factor.
So they could come if they wanted to and participate, because I feel like a lot of it kind of rolls over from meeting to meeting, I can imagine it'd be hard for them to keep up if it's, they're only getting half of the conversation.
Agreed, yes, I, we're not opposed to that at all, but just we didn't want it to be a limiting factor if somebody was needing to drive from one side of town to the other twice a month.
Right, and then the other question is, I know when we had originally talked about it, we had talked about having a second um student representative to shadow, will that happen at all?
We're not opposed to that, however, these kids could potentially change every year, so let's say, having been a high school principal for five years, a student that I selected as a freshman that committed to it, by the end of their freshman year, they were involved in a variety of different activities and said, thank you for the opportunity, but they weren't going to do it as a sophomore, so we're, we're not opposed to, to bringing forth two students, but as far as it being like a shadowing, you know, with the idea that they would come on board full-time the next year, it's not necessarily going to be that those kids are on, on it for four years, does that make sense?
It does a little bit, I think that, we went to one, we had a lot of conversation about this as a Board, we went to one, was it Dixon? Board meeting, and they had two representatives, and I believe their model was, they had one that was a main one, and then the other one was kind of bringing them on to what was to happen next year, because it is, it is a lot of learning, so just something else to consider, that seemed to be working really well for them.
That's great, not opposed to that at all.
Mr. Nelson?
All right, thank you for taking us on, as you know, that was one of the things I saw from a school district in, in Georgia, and they, they seem to have a lot of success with it, um, just a quick question, as far as the uh, the student board member interacting with his peers for feedback, how's that scheduled?
Those um advised, the high school advisory committees are once a month, and so we have not pushed that calendar out for next year yet, because we were kind of waiting to see where this landed, and we would plan those in such a way to make sure that the students had the opportunity to do just that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you, just an idea for the shadow, uh, maybe at the end of the year, we vote on who, or the students would vote on who the next year would be, and then there could be a period of time they could shadow, so just an idea, but I do understand what you're saying as well.
Because kids sometimes get engaged in a variety of different things from one year to the next, and that's what we want, we want them learning, growing, and trying new things in high school, so.
You talked about in there how you had a um alternate, how do you see the alternate playing into this?
I think this would work well with what y'all are calling kind of the shadow, the shadow, the alternate, I think we could use those terms almost interchangeably, um, and work together on, on that, that definition, I think that's more than fair, just making sure, again, because sometimes kids are kids and they do overcommit themselves, that we would always have somebody here to be that voice and then to report back to the student advisory committee.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, we're going to push item six to next, um, next study session, so we can figure out how we want to attack that one, um, but this time, um, item seven, county commissioners' comments?
Yes, thank you, I just have a, a brief comment, um, I wanted to comment on the uh, the um devices policy that y'all are looking at updating, I really appreciate you all looking at that, I know, you know, there'll be some controversy, I'm sure, from, from certain folks on that, but I think it's common sense, I think it's long overdue, um, I mean, I'm a parent, I have a, a teenager who just got their first cellphone, and so I understand, you know, knowing where your child is at, knowing that they're safe, but at the same time, he's certainly not using that phone during, during his classroom hours, and so I, I love the compromise with them being able to have the phone if there's an emergency, but absolutely not using it, not having it on, I just think that's, that's just common sense, I think that's a great idea, so I highly applaud that, um, also, as far as the uh, the student uh, non-voting member, um, if he's going to participate in the entire Board meeting, then I would ask that maybe uh the county commissioners would have an expanded discussion time as well for the, for the Board meeting, just a, just a thought, but thank you.
Okay. I had to make other business, Dr. Lena Vitter?
Good evening, Board members, today I had the pleasure of attending the Middle School Career Expo at the Wilma Rudolph Event Center, and the STEM Expo at Austin Peay State University, a day filled with interacting with students and community members who showed up to invest in our students was heartwarming, we had numerous industry and community partners who shared their careers with our middle schoolers, and volunteers who evaluated STEM projects. Norm Brumbley and I even got to hear a pitch from third graders on how they use the engineering design process to potentially solve our parking issues at their elementary school, I'm hoping we can make their plan come true in the near future with some capital project dollars. Yes, that was a shameless plug for our county commissioners. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to take a moment to recognize all of our educators in CMCSS who give to our students every day. Research has shown that teachers in the classroom matter more to student achievement than any other aspect of schooling, I would encourage everyone to reach out to teachers this week to thank them for their dedication to our students. Mr. Lanier, this concludes my report for the evening.
Okay, any other board comments? Aaron?
First off, the probably, the third graders probably figured out how to fix all the issues on all of our schools, so that's awesome, um, I just wanted to say, sorry, Board, I couldn't be here last week, or two weeks ago, um, I shared ahead of time with several people that wasn't going to be able to be here, uh, I think it's the only time, the entire time I've been elected as a representative that wasn't here because of uh being up there, um, and it was because it was the last day of the session, and so I, I just wanted to say that to you guys, I do want to go on record that I would have voted for the budget as well, um, and I appreciate you guys, uh, filling the gap when I was gone, thank you.
Mr. Garland?
Quick comment, I would like to remind all of us that next week is the most important week of our school year, uh, I think next week is, you know, graduations?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, well, week after next, whatever, but the bottom line is, that is the most important week of our school year, I won't be able to talk to you before then, and as many as possible to come and watch those kids walk across the stage, uh, for the twenty-plus years that I've been sitting on this Board, I have never missed, I, I don't think I missed but one graduation, and I do that because graduation is a very important part of a child's life, and if we are not in- involved enough, or we are not dedicated enough to set aside time to come out and watch them and, and salute them, then it make them think that it's just another day, but it's not another day, it's a great day for the parents, it's a great day for the students, and it's an excellent day for the teachers and the staff that provide the education that we provide annually to all of, almost forty thousand of our students, and thank you, Dr. Luna and staff.
Ms. Berry?
I just want to thank our teachers for all you do for the children, you know, without you, they probably wouldn't get a quality education, but you are trained, and you are committed, and you do what's best for children, you make your best effort in every situation, exposing those children to new concepts and getting them ready to take on life, and what you do is very important, don't take it light, because it's, you know, I had a parent call me earlier today, and she was just saying, her child attended one of our community schools, and that child is so equipped, and she's going on to UT, and she just said, pup, uh, CMCSS schools are wonderful, and I just want us to brag a little bit, because we are, and if, I always say, if a frog doesn't croak at his own pond, no one else is, so CMCSS teachers, thank you for what you do for our students, because you're helping them to reach their potential and be prepared to be successful in life, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, also, I'd like to go ahead and thank the teachers as well, um, there's a special thing when you talk to teachers, you can tell that, this is the thing I call the heart of a teacher, and not, everybody has that, and when you talk to teachers, you can tell that, uh, that special individual has that heart for students and, and teaching and, and just imparting knowledge to our students, and I thank for each, I'm grateful for each and every teacher that uh lends that to the students, and I think we do a very good job here within CMCSS, I think there's some great teachers here, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, with that, we stand adjourned. All right, with that, we stand adjourned.